Good, thank you so much, Ryan.
Okay, let's call our meeting to order for the Board of County Commissioners. It happens to be September 26, 2022, and please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I believe that we first need to convene as the governing body of the Deschutes County 911 Service District. For item number one, thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan.
For the record, Jonathan Spring, Technical Services Manager for 911. I apologize for the sound of my voice. There's two things I have that happen every fall. It's my kids coming home with more than homework and college football. One's obviously more fun than the other, so.
There you go.
But I digress.
So what did you come home with, then?
A seasonal cold or whatever the kids get from school.
Oh, yes.
They brought it back to me, so I got what they got, just a cold.
Okay, okay. That happened to my husband, who is an ear, nose, and throat doctor, who always washed his hands when he was dealing with patients, but then, once we had children, he was always getting sick.
Right, right.
It makes a difference.
I can attest to that. For the 10 years I was married before we had kids, too.
There you go.
Great.
Yeah, before you today is a negotiated lease agreement we have with the landowner out of Henkelbutte, which is in the southeastern part of Sisters. This is part of our radio enhancement plan, so the site was identified by our engineering group. I've worked with Kim to go through and negotiate this lease agreement. Thank you very much, Kim, for helping me with this process. This is actually one of the first ones that I've done in my role. And we've now come to a point where we're ready for you to look it over, and if everything looks good, approve it. From a budgetary perspective, we have this budgeted in our ongoing 705, and the plan we have for the site is in this fiscal year's capital project for the radio enhancement plan. I welcome any questions.
Okay, great.
So $2,000 a month?
Yeah, this is consistent with other privately held radio sites we lease.
And then we're paying utilities also?
Our, yeah, we'll have our own meter, correct.
I was kind of surprised at that price. I mean, I think of an antenna on a building, but I guess that's the market, huh?
Yeah, this is consistent with our other sites that we buy from a private party or lease from a private party.
I don't have a question about the lease agreement, but reading about this did make me curious. If a site like this, you know, these are high exposed sites. If a structure like this blows down in the wind or gets struck by lightning or something, are we insured to cover repair and replacement of?
I don't know about the specific insurance. I believe so. But from the technical perspective that I can speak to on this, we are covered from that point of view, where if one specific site goes down, all of the others will fill in the gaps as best as possible. We also have a portable site that we can use for an emergency, go out and stand up, which we actually have at this site operating right now for testing. I'd probably have to defer that question to risk management, though, the insurance.
You've got backup and redundancy.
Correct.
No other questions, then?
Also, the only other thought, it's a five-year agreement, but the intention is basically open-ended.
Correct, yeah, so we have to put a term on it, and then essentially we'll just continue to renew it as we continue to operate there.
Great. Well, I'm supportive, so I'll move board signature of document 2022-775, Henkelbutte Lease Agreement for Long-Term Radio Enhancement Plan.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Monsieur DeBonne?
Yes.
Monsieur Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So, thank you, Jonathan, for coming. And I thought you were going to maybe tell me you had a juniper allergy, but no, just.
Could be that, too.
I'm allergic to penicillin, but that's it as far as.
Okay, thank you. All right, so now we need to reconvene as the governing body of Deschutes County. We have item number two. Welcome. Thank you very much.
So you've all introduced yourself, but this is Robert Tintel, your new Chief Finance Officer. He started today. And everyone at the county is excited, especially me.
Oh, Wayne.
Great to have Robert, and I just spent some time with him today. You've made a great choice there. I think things are going to go really well.
Yeah, we don't want any drama in the finance department. We just need to know what the numbers are.
That's right. All right, so I'm going to go ahead and make this presentation, and of course, Robert will take over for future ones. And I was here back in July, I believe, and we talked about the May statements. I think that's the last time we had this item on the agenda. And I think I told you at the time that it would be fall before we came back to you with July and August, because, and we're still not completely audited for the June statements. So we'll talk about June in a second. So you have three documents in your packet. You have the June Treasurers Report. You have the July Treasurers Report with the financials for the month of July. And then you have the August Report. So I'm just going to be talking off the August Reports. So maybe you can set the others aside, and if you have questions on those, we can talk about those. So, you know, we'll start out by just talking about the investment side of things. And we talked about this at some length last time, but as the Fed continues to increase interest rates, the county is almost a one-to-one beneficiary of those actions. So consumers are getting kind of hurt by this in a number of ways. Borrowing money costs more. You know, credit card debt and, you know, there's all sorts of things going up. And the whole idea of the Fed raising rates is to slow the economy down, which means less employment and less wage growth and all sorts of kind of dark things that we wouldn't really wish on anybody. But the county is a winner when it comes to this. Because of our investment portfolio, we're now earning about, you can get 4%, over 4%, like 4.3% on a one-year investment in a treasury security. So taking virtually no risk, which is what the county's portfolio is really all about, we're getting a return that's hundreds of percent greater than it was a year ago. And that's just remarkable to me that things have changed so much. If you look at.
Oh, Wayne?
Yes.
Before you get too far into this, I did notice in the July statement of the FTE, for the sheriff's office, it jumped up for unfilled to 44.75. And I even texted Sheriff Nelson about this yesterday. But in June, the unsealed was 26.75, and then in August, it was 30.75. But somehow, the number, that 44.75, seems like something else was going on there, and I'm, you know, it didn't seem right.
Well, the one thing to keep in mind is between June and July, any positions that were approved in the new budget.
I know, only three were approved.
Okay.
Only three.
Yeah.
So that doesn't answer it.
I don't have an explanation for the rest of that.
Okay.
I think checking with the sheriff's officer, perhaps HR, could give you an idea of what recruitments are underway and if they lost a bunch of people or what.
No, I mean, it just seemed like it was just that one month, and it just really didn't make sense, because I was going, well, it's only three additional employees from the prior year, so, okay, anyway.
Oh, I see what you mean. So in August, it jumped back down to 30.
Mm-hmm, 30.75. It was 26.75 in June.
Just make a note of that. We'll.
I just thought something.
Look into that, because.
You know how things happen?
See what you're saying now? That's a big jump.
Yeah, it didn't really make sense.
And then down again, so.
See, like, Robert, one time 911 disappeared from the schedule, and so I really try and watch it, because we're so worried about our, you know, our FTEs, how many people are not working. Thanks.
All right, we'll get.
Okay, back to why we're getting more interest now.
Yeah.
Yes.
We'll get back to you on the FTE thing. So, you know, Greg was investing about a year ago at, you know, a half a percent. We're getting 4.3% today. And when I was here talking to you before, it was like 2.75%. And so it's dramatically changed since then, and I expect it to continue to dramatically change for the county. So I don't think the increases are over by any means, and we're going to see rates continue to rise, which, from the interest earnings standpoint, is a really great thing for the county. I think I mentioned last time our annual earnings, you know, about a year or two ago during the COVID recession, were about $1.2 million or 1.5 million. Before I got here, before the 2008 recession really took its bite, the county used to earn almost $6 million a year. And that was like 10 or 12 years ago, when rates were at the 5%, 6% range. So I think we're headed back to something like that, at least for a period of time. It's hard to say. So what I expect we'll do as a strategy, we'll talk about it, is see if we can't take money out of the pool and invest it pretty short and take advantage of these higher rates on the short end of the curve. So there'll be some additional revenues there. So we'll see where that goes.
So where is the LGIP at this moment, then? Is it still at the 1.65?
No, it's gone up. It went up in early September, I think, 1.9%. But it's still lagging a lot.
Still a lot.
So I would expect every three weeks for that rate to continue to rise. But it's gonna, the pool kind of lags the market, because just like we have things already invested, the pool also has things already invested, so it'll take a while to replace those maturing securities with the higher earnings. Just to give you an idea, August of '21's investment earnings was $130,000, so a year ago. If you look on the investment report on the first page, investment net income, $209,000. So dramatically changing, and it'll continue to change. Any questions on any of the investment information, treasury stuff? Okay? So if you get beyond that, in the August reports, I was just going to mention, and the chair's already mentioned it, is, you know, we added about 22 positions in the budget to our FTE. So that is smattering throughout certain departments. So you can see that our FTEs, our vacant rate right now at the end of August was 11.9, almost 12%. So that's, we were at down around 10, 10% to 11% most of last year, so it's up. But I would expect it to be up because of the positions that were approved that haven't been recruited yet. So I would expect that to be coming down over time. Of course, we'll just have to wait and see what the attrition rate is on the other side of that equation. You know, if there's a lot of turnover in the county this next year, that'll certainly show up here as well. Any questions on FTEs? Okay. So on the financial summary, if you go to the next couple of pages called Budget to Actuals, Countywide Summary, All Departments, just open those two pages up. You've got Resources and Requirements. I'm just going to talk from this one, these two pages. There's not a lot of interesting stuff going on, you know, by August in the fiscal year. So you'd expect to kind of see just kind of normal expenses occurring and normal revenue. We don't have property tax coming in yet, so if you look at the revenue side, the general fund is only at 4%, and that's because we haven't billed our property tax. So revenues aren't very interesting at this stage either. On the requirement side, you know, you see both the end of last fiscal year and the far-left columns, and then you see the projections for the balance of this fiscal year in the far-right columns. Everybody see that? And so if you look back, June of '22, just a couple of things of note, ARPA, the fourth one down there, 37%. We budgeted the entire resource, but we've only spent 37% of it. So Dan and Laura are busy getting contracts out and money out the door. And so we'll see that number grow over time. Road CIP is only at 27% at the end of June. And that, I think, is just a timing thing. You know, they do all of their work in the summertime, and that's July, August, and September, so I think we'll see that number for this next year go up quite a bit. Fair and Expo, it looks like it's over budget, but the legally adopted budget includes Fund 617 as well. So when you take both those into account, they're in great shape.
To confirm, how many more employees did you say we are starting this fiscal year off with?
I did a quick calculation of 22.
I did it of 27.
Did you get that out of the budget?
Yeah, I was picking it up from here. I don't know. Anyway, we can talk about it later and just see. I was.
I was comparing June to.
I did June, too, yes. It's like, it's now 1,219.56. And I had the other one as 1192.51.
Oh, you know what? I wrote the 92 badly, and I thought it was 97, so you're probably right.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Sorry, Wayne.
No, no, that's okay. I looked at it, and I thought, rather than recheck it, I know I know my numbers.
And I know how I write eights. They're really bad, so, anyway.
So for this fiscal year, there's not a lot of interesting things, although the Health Department shows their revenues at 104%, their projection. And these are really early projections in the far-right-hand column on both revenues and expenses. So it's hard to know, you know, what they're thinking. Maybe they have some grants in mind that weren't in the budget or something. If you look at the rest of this, on the expense side, the only two that the projections are over 100%, there's the road CIP in solid waste, and I think those are timing, project-related issues. Everything else looks just as it should look, so. Any questions on any of that?
Have we talked about the room tax revenue, then? The fact that it was sitting at 30% of actual? Is that where it normally is, like, you know, 13% more than because of summer?
Yeah, so through August, that includes just July.
Right.
So that's, even though we're showing two months.
Okay, it's only July's numbers, then, in that one?
Well, it's, I suppose it's June and July.
Okay.
Yeah, June and July, so, you know, I think August will be important to see what that looks like. Back in May, some of the projections for, that we saw out of COVID, were sort of a little bit of a dip going into June. And so we see things pretty strong. You saw the reports come out of finance, and they're 12%, 15% ahead of last year.
Right.
At this stage, everything looks great, so I would say that that 30% is about what we'd expect at this point.
Thank you.
Any other questions? That's all I really have for you today, unless you have some questions we can follow up on later. If you come across any items that you want some explanation, just let us know, and finance, we'll get over and talk to you.
I did notice that in, I thought maybe you would have an idea, Health Services 274. The personnel was, for the first two months, was already at 22%, whereas the year it was at 16.7%. And were there some special payments that we did? And were there some special payments that we did for, you know, those those special benefits for people staying? Is that, that's, it's got a footnote on it, the two hundred and forty four thousand.
Way over on the, yeah.
On page sixty seven of our packet.
You're looking at all of health?
Well, I'm just looking at two seventy four because it was twenty two percent, and we're only at sixteen point seven percent of the year to date.
Yeah, so if you look at the whole Health Services, there's a summary page, and then the each of the divisions, it's at nineteen percent for.
Right, for all of them.
Yeah. I would expect that's a little higher than you would expect because of those retention.
Unfilled positions.
That would make it lower than we'd expect, but.
Yeah, so it's, I think it's higher because of the retention bonus grant that's being paid. Because that would roll up the the taxes and other payroll costs as well.
Okay, yeah, they're saying the variance is almost half a million, but there's, I don't believe that's, there's an explanation with that.
Okay. We'll look at those numbers for each of these divisions and and do a little analysis and figure that out. Any other questions, comments?
I guess, I mean, since we were zooming in on the transient room tax revenue, and it does look like the last two monthly reports I've seen were doing better than, were doing better than budgeted. Can you review for for me what that means in terms of funds that are unallocated TRT? I mean, we we made quite a lot of allocations during the budgeting process this this last May. But I'm I'm curious whether, I I can't actually, I I can't remember now basically at what point we actually have unallocated TRT to work with. Whether, you know, if it came in on budget, if it came in above budget, or if it, I'm not sure if I'm, I'm not sure if I'm asking this.
So you want to know kind of if things go as expected, what unallocated revenues would that produce by the end of the?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I I don't recall what, how the budget looked, so let, we'll get back to you on that.
That'd be great. But if if we continue to perform above budget, there's, there would definitely be some unallocated TRT to to work with.
I would think so. Yeah, we'll look into that for you. Anything else?
I just think it's important at this time to make a comment on the annual county fair revenue. Was two hundred and twenty five thousand over what we had budgeted. So.
That was a screaming success.
Screaming success.
Yeah, that went well.
Yes. So I just, you know, I want to acknowledge that team and what a great job they did. And I believe Friday night, we were awarded the best large rodeo of the NPRA. So so, you know, kudos to Roxy for doing all that she did. So it was really wonderful. Now, if we can just bring the circuit finals for NPRA back to Deschutes County, we'll really be in great shape. Think that's a possibility?
With your leadership, it's very possible.
I don't know. How many rodeos can I have in Redmond, in Redmond? I know. Well, I'm I'm thinking they want to come back. So they were in Prineville, and then they went to Salem, but I think they would rather be on the side of the mountain. So see what I can do.
See what you can do.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for your time today.
Wayne, aren't you gonna miss us?
Oh, yeah.
You can watch us.
I really, I've really enjoyed this little gig with the county. So thanks for giving me the opportunity to do that to help out, and I've enjoyed it. So thanks for that.
Thank you so much, Wayne. You.
You're gonna be with us for a little while for transition.
Yep, yep.
Anyway.
Not saying goodbye today.
And thank you, Robert, so much for joining us.
Thank you.
Okay, we now go to item number three. Hello, thank you so much. Jen?
Good afternoon. Jen Patterson, Strategic Initiatives Manager for the county. I just spoke with Don, and he's on his way. He's just a few minutes out. We had them on at two o'clock, so they were aiming for one thirty arrival. So I don't know if you have other business you can go to, or how, I don't know exactly what to do.
Well, let me see who we can go to. He, it's, I think he's part of our agenda for a minute or two.
Yeah, the next three items.
Three, four, let's see, what can we go to five? Probably not. Item number six, I'm sure Ken isn't here yet, or maybe he's gonna be on Zoom. So you think he's just a couple of minutes out?
Yes, I just spoke with him on the phone.
Okay, all right. You can just take a short breather. Other items?
Yeah, other items and even down the economic development path. So this is for a handout. It's a color printout. Sun River, Lapine Economic Profile, just a couple of pages. It was published by the Edco proper and the Sun River, Lapine Economic Development Effort. And it's just a good snapshot, talking about, you know, southern Deschutes County population. So you think of the city of Lapine to be about two thousand or twenty two hundred people or whatever, but it's about twenty thousand people in southern Deschutes and northern Klamath for a service area, workforce even. Then the regional workforce and medium household income. Then the back pages show some of the businesses, the, you know, outriders and Sun River Resort itself, St. Charles, Quicksilver. So it's just a point in time, little color brochure handout for the Sun River, Lapine Economic Development Profile that was published recently. Just wanted to share that. Also, last week, I was able to attend the Redmond Economic Development, the Ready Group Strategic Planning Session. It was in the afternoon. It was the board. And this is a kind of a three-year window for economic development. You think of taking some time, figuring out what does it look like now, where we want to go in the near future. So this was putting the content together for the next strategic plan for Ready. And I know Edco does this proper also. So that was an effort that was done, and it'll be published soon. There's, you know, capital investment on the horizon, businesses wanting to be in the area. So it was a pretty positive environment. We're talking with the Ready people. So two updates, North and South.
How, are Mike's pizzas, are they in full, are they in construction now?
Uh, there was an update. They said that they were, they want to turn dirt, and they were thinking maybe this fall, but probably this winter. So it's really coming. I think it's a forty million dollar project. And as I say, it slipped a few months from when they thought they were going to be moving dirt, but it's out there. Wild Mike's Pizza.
Okay, great. Wonderful to know. Commissioner Chang?
Yeah, I got a couple of things. First, I, on Saturday, for National Public Lands Day, I went and joined a group called Public Land Stewards out of China Hat Road. There's about maybe seventy five people out volunteering, and it's possible that they that they're gonna tally over the course of the week, but it's possible that they removed something in the range of two hundred thousand pounds of trash from from out China Hat Road. You know, just on a site-by-site basis, the the spots where we worked, you could see a really substantial difference in just the the visual appearance. It's also a really interesting opportunity to just kind of, since it was Saturday, many of the folks who are, you know, who are living out at China Hat Road right now, who might be gone at at work during the day, during the work week, were actually at their, you know, at their campsites. You can see them, their kids and other people. So it was a useful opportunity to just assess the 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 state of homelessness out in China Hat Road as well. So report on that. I also, I'm not sure if we each received a letter like this, or whether it just came to me, but I made, in case you didn't receive them as well, I made copies of this letter that I got from Les and Robin Adams down in South County, expressing concerns about short-term rentals. I guess there's been quite a few short-term rentals that have come into their neighborhood. And, you know, basically, the 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 sum of this letter is, has a lot of impacts on year-round residents or, you know, long-term residents. And also, they they express concerns about, you know, how this is affecting the housing market, because these are, they were, they said these were moderately priced homes. They were purchased from local homeowners and now are not available for, you know, as housing units for local people, because they're being used as short-term rentals. So the the upshot of the letter was asking us to to consider putting in place a program and rules around short-term rentals in Deschutes County and the unincorporated county. I think that's a very interesting idea and wanted to put that out there for discussion.
Okay. All right.
So in response to this letter, you know, this is a request for, you know, maybe doing something about these, you know, short-term rentals. You know, I I support having that discussion be brought to the planning commission or, or, you know, just put on a queue of discussion items there, you know, and really have, if you don't want to shed light on that. I don't have a feel for the numbers of these, but I, you know, I understand this this specific instance sure could be, you know, impactful for specific property owners, you know, if there's one or more houses in the near. So as I say, I'm not opposed to having a conversation, planning commission, you know, maybe schedule it up where there's somehow to have that discussion, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, no, and I mean, in my understanding from the the finance office is that now we we are better equipped than ever to to know who has a short-term rental and who who doesn't out there. And they were, they were doing it so that they could track whether people were were paying, were paying their transient room taxes or not. But this, if they've got that data, then we probably have a a pretty good sense of how many and where short-term rentals are at this point as well, instead of kind of operating in a vacuum, which is where we've been.
Yeah, so a quick survey, maybe.
We could have been in the dark, so.
Quick survey of of the status as we know it, you know, maybe that's a step to take for.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for that. I think we all got that letter. Oh, and I will mention that I did go to the twentieth anniversary party for Mosaic Medical Friday night. They had hundreds and hundreds of people at their celebration. And yeah, thank you for all that they do for the past twenty years. So to Mosaic. So now I see the room is full, so we can go back to item, yes, the loan conversion, item number three, please.
Yeah, we were, we were way ahead there, Don.
I hope you didn't get a speeding ticket taken here.
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, and welcome, Bruce. Good afternoon.
Are we good to go?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and kick it off and then turn it over to you. Is that, great.
I'm sorry.
For the record, Jen Patterson, Strategic Initiatives Manager for the county. This afternoon, we have Don from Edco and Scott Van Eschen, President of ARCC, joining us. The motion before you today is to request authorization of the county administrator to convert a sixteen thousand dollar economic development forgivable loan made to ARCC into a grant. The board approved the loan to ARCC in June of twenty eighteen. The original terms included adding eight new positions and maintaining those positions for a twelve-month period, ending December thirty first, twenty twenty one. Due to COVID impacts, the terms were amended in June of twenty twenty one, and ARCC maintained six and a half new positions through June thirtieth, twenty twenty one, and increased to a total of eight new positions maintained through June thirtieth of twenty twenty two. Turn it over to Don and Scott.
Well, thank you. Good afternoon. Commissioners Adair, Chang, and Debone. Hi, Nick. Well, I'm going to occupy the next three slots of your agenda, so we may kind of mash them to get a little together, but maybe we'll get done a little early. So. So I'm Don Melman, Bend Area Director for Edco. It's really kind of a pleasure to bring three companies here to you today, two of which is, as Jen mentioned, we are going to, we have proposed to forgive the loan under the forgivable loan program and then add a new company. So we'll add the new company request at the end of, at the last of the agenda. And then also, we've got Scott Van Eschen, who's here with me today to answer any questions and make some comments. And we'll also have Stacia Guzzo here with Smarty Pits when we do her section of it. So with that, we'll we'll get going. I'm just gonna be really brief. You have a memo on the background. Jen just repeated some of it. But in, ARCC moved here in twenty nineteen, started in twenty, excuse me, nineteen eighty three, providing educational programs, gap programs, and international wilderness programs for students. In twenty nineteen, the company was granted a loan for sixteen thousand, but as you may expect, any company that is international in their business plan got whacked, and and Scott and ARCC got whacked hard. So we came to the commissioners and changed, requested a change, and you agreed to it, basically providing about a year and a half of delay in the program. Not reducing the compensation level, not reducing the number of employees, just kind of moving the goalposts. And so we did that. The diligence committee and and I, we certify that the company has met the requirements for that additional employment and the compensation. And we recommend deferral. The the deferral worked, and it provided a chance, really a community benefit for the whole of the community to, for the commissioners to be flexible in this program. And talking with Scott last week, you know, you kind of forget some of the details and facts, but Scott mentioned to me that the delay wasn't just, didn't have to write a check for a while. It was allowing them to retool some programs. They had an international element to them, and they shifted it to being a domestic element only. And so it allowed the company to kind of just change its landing place for its students. And I think Scott mentioned that they developed that program in something like a month. So just really, really vital change, and I know Scott's very thankful. I'll be brief. That's all I've got to say. If Scott probably has a couple of comments and any questions you have, glad to hear them.
Sure. Well, nice to, nice to be here. Thank you. First of all, I wanted to say that we, just by way of background, we were in the Bay Area for about thirty years. And one of our issues that we started to face in San Francisco was that our employees just couldn't afford to live there anymore. So we were losing great employees. And so we made the decision in twenty seventeen to look around and leave the Bay Area. And so we were looking at all the usual suspects, you know, Bozeman and and Boise and Bend. And we came up here, our whole team came up here, we met with Edco. And a key element in our deciding to come to Bend was the meeting with them. They did a great presentation, but also with the with the grant and the loan. And that really helped us with our moving expenses and that sort of thing. And I'll say that, so that was twenty seventeen. We were looking at it twenty eighteen. We came up here. And of our, at that point, nine employees, I was looking at, we have seven of our employees have bought homes here. Everybody moved up except for one person who had a relationship. They've all bought homes and been able, they would never be able to buy a home in the Bay Area, and so they've invested here. And yes, we got, we got whacked in in twenty twenty. And so we're very, very grateful for being able to push that out a little bit. And one other element that I thought I might add would be that we're, we've just looked at the full-time employees that we brought to, that we brought to Bend, but we as an organization, as mentioned, we do, we do community service, wilderness, educational programming for for teenagers and for kids up to up to their college freshman year. And so we bring, in addition to our full-time people, we'll bring in fifty or sixty people a year training here in Bend. And what's been a really delightful thing has been a lot of those people, while we can't employ them year-round, have moved on from us. And and they basically started to populate Bend. I was looking, we have seven teachers in the in the community. We have psychologists in the community, et cetera. So we've become a bit of a bubble here for for all the former ARC, ARC people. And so that's something that doesn't show up in the in the numbers that 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 you've been presenting here. But anyway, we're very, very grateful. And that certainly, to think about writing a check for sixteen thousand dollars in twenty twenty when all of our revenues disappeared, would have been really tough. And so we're grateful for that postponement and also for the grant. So thank you.
Thank you so much. It's nice to hear, like, how the Alvek expands, you know. And you, you know, you just think of the seven people, but you're saying that quite a few of them have stayed. That's good to know. You said Boise, did you say Bozeman too? Everything had to have a B? Was that the first or car? Okay, that's what I thought you said.
So the the seven or eight staff, those are, those are kind of like. So the, the seven or eight staff, those are, those are kind of like the, the nerve center of your organization, and then there's, there's a, a number of kind of crew leaders, you know, like program leaders or trip leaders and.
Exactly, yeah. With all the planning here, we, you know, as I said, bring people in for training. We're dealing with clients, you know, families from all over the, all over the world, actually. And so those are the people that deal with all the logistics and such. Bring, bring people in, train, and then send them out.
And, but between your, between your, your field staff and, and, and your headquartered staff, like, are you traveling a lot? I mean, is there, are you guys adding a lot, a lot of business to the Redmond Airport?
No, there are a lot of trips back and forth to Redmond. Well, for, for me and for our senior staff, we'll go out and scout new locations around the world, that's one of the joys of the job, for sure. Because our, the students that we deal with are, you know, 13 to 20, they don't want me out there in the field with them, so that's why we have the, you know, the young, the young bucks out there taking care of, taking care of them. But so for me, it's mostly trip scouting and that sort of thing, checking on programs periodically, but not leading them.
Yeah. But I mean, that, that strikes me as maybe another, an additional economic benefit to our region is, you know, just keeping up the volume of, of air traffic through the Redmond Airport.
And also running programs through this, as, as Don mentioned, we were doing mostly international stuff, and then when COVID hit, we had to retool and do things domestically. So we ended up bringing a lot of groups through Bend.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Well, I'm so glad you made it through COVID.
Thank you.
Thank you for persisting and, and, yeah, yeah, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
And congratulations, you know, we want success on both sides. Create those living wage jobs, just like you mentioned, sounds like even more success with, you know, teachers being able to transition from, from your company even to the, to the education system here, so that's really interesting to hear. But yeah, keeping those jobs going over a period of time, especially the roller coaster we've been through. So congratulations, and it's great that we're here today celebrating this. So with that, I'll move administrator approval for converting a $16,000 economic development into a grant for ARC, ARCC.
Thank you, are there any further comments? I just want to say it's nice to hear that everyone was able to buy a house too. No, I mean, you know.
We might be losing that at this point.
Yes, but it's nice to know that it was a, a more comfortable place to raise a family and keep your roots here, so thank you for that. Mr. Debone?
Yes.
Mr. Chang?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. So thank you, Scott, thanks for coming today.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, thanks, appreciate it.
There you go.
Thank you for picking Bend over Boise and Bozeman.
That was easy.
Okay, Don?
Well, with me to here is Stacia Guzzo. Stacia is the founder of Smarty Pits. I'll, I'll tell you, I've been here in this room to do these kinds of presentations probably half the times. My very first one was for the initiation of Stacia's loan two plus years ago, so she was, she was my first deal, if you will. Smarty Pits relocated from Tehachapi, California in 20, time flies, 2020. They make a variety, had made a variety of products, but focused on aluminum-free deodorant. Stacia had a very interesting and dear relationship event with her mother and, and cancer, and so it's kind of spurred the development of, of the idea of the business. It's a, a lot of dangerous chemicals-free product, is kind of how I'd describe it. Available throughout the U.S. and Canada. The money that was granted to Smarty Pits was used to relocate the company and also Smarty Pits leased a new building, actually, it was a new building on an old lot, just right by the Bend High School. So it created another benefit, side benefit, and it created another property tax opportunity for the county, which Stacia also participated in the enterprise zone. So Stacia's been very active and we're really happy. The, the loan was a $10,000 loan, it was not the, as you may recall, occasionally we do those loans for not, for below the average county wage, because we want to spur all employment. So we adjusted that to below the $2,000 maximum to the pro-rata level of the compensation. So those loans were $1,000 per employee, there were 10 employees in the program, and she, Smarty Pits was to have completed that employment growth by December 31 of '22. She did it early, Smarty Pits did it early, completed that 12-month maintenance period in, in March of, of this year. And mopped by 10 employees in the program, but she had 13 employees. And the compensation was, during that time, the wage basis in Bend went up, so she naturally ended up paying more than the minimum. So anyway, it was, it was a great program all along, all around. I don't have much, much to add other than that. Stacia's been a, a great, I know that her business is changing quite a bit, which is sort of interesting to learn about because she's a small company, it has very large customers, and sometimes that imbalance can be difficult to deal with, but she's, she's dealing with that today and, and is successful. So with that, I'll leave it to any questions from the Commissioners and add some comments from Stacia.
Yes, thank you so much for having me here today, I really appreciate it. This loan was part of what made it possible for me to bring Smarty Pits to Bend and to expand in the way we were able to. I started the company 11 years ago, I think, at this point, out of my home, worked at farmer's markets and built from the ground up, had my first employees in Tehachapi in a 2,400-square-foot warehouse. We got to the point in late 2019, early 2020, where we were outgrowing that space by leaps and bounds. We got some, several very large domestic and international customers, including TJ Maxx and Marshalls, Ulta and a few others. And it was very difficult to work in such a small space, but Tehachapi is a very small town. And we didn't have the labor force that I needed, and we didn't have the available space that I needed. And my Vice President of Sales at the time was a Bend native, which was part of what caused me to come to Bend and look at the area, fall in love with it, and also learn about how many opportunities were available for entrepreneurs and small businesses. So we decided in the middle of COVID to move up here. I actually was on Good Morning America on March 5th of 2020, came up to Bend for a business meeting with my VP on March 12th, the day everything shut down, and actually left on March 15th with a down payment on a house. So, so that decision was made and we said, well, this is going to be a crazy ride, but let's do it. And it has been incredible for the business. The warehouse that we moved to is just under 10,000 square feet. We've been able to create efficiencies and processes that were not possible earlier, to the point where my staff has been able to create hand pour up to 90,000 units of deodorant a month. And they do it, we don't do it with any machinery other than heating up the, the product, they pour it all by hand every day. I have an incredible staff, we didn't have anybody move with us. So we had to start from the ground up, and the labor force in Bend has been absolutely astounding, just the quality of work, the work ethic that they have, and the attitude that they bring. I can't be more grateful for the staff that I have. So it's allowed me to be able to create the business that I always dreamed of when I was pouring deodorant from my stove top on my kitchen table many years ago, and provided an amazing opportunity for many of these people who had been maybe working in retail or something, and now they're able to do managerial positions and things where they're supervising people. So that's been a really neat benefit as well. So that's, that's where we are now. And the business model, as Don mentioned, is shifting away from some of these larger discount, TJ Maxx in particular, discount buyers, to more relationship-based businesses that value us on a deeper level, where we can grow from that standpoint, having a higher profit margin, than ones where we're going for high volume but very low profit margin is difficult in, as things, inflation happens and the freight costs are beginning to mount. So that's the, the business shift that is beginning to happen that Don mentioned.
Is that, are those, those clients and, you know, and I would guess even some of the, the people who are attracted to your company, I mean, is that in part because of, you know, the, the mission? I mean, the, you know, better for, better for the environment, better for people's health?
Yes, absolutely.
Product that you're.
Absolutely, and we, we incorporate a give-back program as well that donates back to City of Hope, which is a world leader in cancer research, and we, so we give a portion of all of our sales back to City of Hope. We've been able to raise over $115,000 for their breast cancer research program, and a lot of our single customers up to, you know, customers like Ulta are very attracted to that portion as well because there's a social good that is associated with it.
Yeah. Thank you for, thank you for not just doing good business, but doing good for the world.
Thank you, thank you.
So are there any other local markets where you sell here?
Yes, so in Bend, we, we have a few that are, you know, like Newport Market, we have some of our products in there. I also work, I love to work with smaller businesses too, so there are several just single-owned salons and, you know, just small mom-and-pop type businesses that carry us as well. So I, you know, for me, creating a relationship is more valuable, I'd much rather, one of our core values that's posted in our break room is to value relationships over transactions. And I always would rather work with somebody that I can hop on the phone with and say, like, hey, how are things going? What's selling? How can I support you? Than to be a number that they're saying, can you meet these quotas and how much of a discount can you give us?
Well, I know what you sell is very, very important, that maybe more of the world should use, so I, I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Well, and congratulations, you know, exceeding the employment numbers even, so during this crazy, you know, roller coaster ride of a pandemic and opening up your business at that time, so congratulations and welcome to Bend. I guess that's, that's in the past a little bit, but it worked out well.
Oh, it's been, it's been such an amazing community. I can't, it's my favorite place I've ever lived.
Mm-hmm. Great.
And I was also at Mosaic's 20th Tuesday.
Oh, great, I know, wasn't that an amazing crowd?
It was so much fun, I danced all night.
Oh, it was, yes, it was a quite phenomenal event, so, yeah, I know, 20 years, amazing, so it's good. Well, you danced all night, that's good to know. And you're smiling today, so thank you for coming in.
And didn't perspire a bit, probably, right?
Well, I smelled good.
Yeah, there we go, okay.
There you go.
Yes.
I moved to authorize the county administrator to convert a $10,000 economic development forgivable loan made to Smarty Pits into a grant.
And I will second it.
Any further discussion? Mr. Chang?
Yes.
Mr. Debone?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. So what a pleasant move, you know?
Thank you so much.
No, thank you, and it's great to know your business is doing so well.
Thank you, and you're welcome to come tour the warehouse anytime.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I know. All right, Don, I think you're still up.
Number three.
Well, I might have to dance myself for a few minutes until our next, oh, that's right, we've, I was, we don't have a company representative, we have Bruce.
There we go.
And we've got Bill.
And Bill too, how about that?
Or you could sit right there, front and center.
Give me the hot seat, yep. Okay, so this is on the other side of the transaction. You, you all know these two gentlemen, they're both on the due diligence committee, one of their roles around town.
One of our roles around town.
Krefmoto LLC is a motorcycle tuning company. It is unique in that it only works on certain suspensions for certain types of motorcycles. It was be, started by Adam Crefting here in Bend in 2011, so it's another really great Bend hometown story. And they've grown pretty consistently for a long, long time. Adam is a very intense and really smart engineer, and he's decided, he knew that to grow the company required a leadership of a different skill set, and so he brought in a gentleman by the name of Tori Upham, who was, who's been in the outdoor and recreational products business in a variety of companies over many years, so he's kind of a been-there, done-that kind of person. So it's really kind of nice, I think it allows, you know, more input, better leadership, faster growth, lower costs and so on, and I think, I think Adam's really happy about it. So the due diligence committee met on August 3rd, our typical due diligence committee, where we ask, we spend an hour and a half or so just asking questions about the marketing, the market, financing, projections, historical financial statements, and whatever else comes to mind. The other individual on the due diligence committee is Chris Petty, who's the, I guess his title is with Express Professionals, he's the.
Division Manager.
Division Manager, okay. And then Amber Yates is also on our, on our due diligence, so the five of us met with, with Tori. We went through the normal quarterly reporting requirements, which is sometimes hard for a small, young company, I've found, where I have to work harder than I would expect on to get that information, to evaluate it, but I think, I'm not worried about it here. So in this, this transaction, we're looking at a loan of $8,500 for the addition of five employees with an average compensation of $1,700 per employee. The average comp for the five positions is just under $48,000, and we expect Adam and Tori Upham expect to begin hiring by August 1st of 2023. So it's a little bit out there in the normal spectrum, a lot farther out than was Stacia with Smarty Pits, but it's typical of many of the companies in our history. We went through the quarterly reporting requirements, as I mentioned, and that is a pretty simple transaction, really nothing unusual about this. Do they have the capital to repay the loan if they're not successful? That's probably what I've learned more in this role about evaluating these companies, that there's a fine line of companies that we feel are, I mean, collectively feel are the beneficiaries of this, they're companies that have enough capital and money to meet or almost meet their plans, but need a little help, so that, but if they got any help, they could repay the loan versus those companies that are so well-capitalized they don't need it. And so this is a company that's on the earlier side of that, they have capital, they can repay the loan, they're cash flow positive, they've had periods of cash flow neutrality, but overall they're cash flow positive. With, so with that, I'll stop and I'll invite Bruce and Bill to add any comments or insights about the company or the process.
I would say in general, I was really impressed by the fact that an owner, founder typically does not recognize that, hey, they may not be the one to lead the company going forward. And so for him to take that step and to bring in professional management leadership for the company and recognize that his contribution to the company is probably best served in the area of engineering and product development. I think as a group, I think we found that to be the case, that here's a situation where, you know, obviously they've got to step up to another level to be able to afford that overhead, but being able to blend it across two different companies, I thought was, you know, kind of a really powerful statement to the committee.
Yeah, I felt really comfortable with Tori, what a smart guy and.
Oh, Bruce, do you want to just introduce yourself, Bruce, just for the record?
I'm.
I don't know if you did, Bill, did you introduce yourself?
Yeah, absolutely. Bill Coon, a member of the Forgivable Loan Committee and other things around town.
Bruce Barrett, member of the committee.
Thank you.
So, super impressed with Tori and his background, it's just incredible, the fact that he would come to a company like this, they're very fortunate to have that happen. But there is an additional side to this company that makes it realistic for him to get his feet wet and really make things happen there for the whole, whole organization. So I think, yeah, they're certainly capable, but I think the, this is one, we're, we're very sensitive to do these folks really need this funding or can they do this on their own? We don't want to use it inappropriately, but for this company, it appears that they're right on that tipping point where if they could get a little help, they're going to make things really happen quickly, so we're, we're really supportive of this application.
Well, thank you for taking the time out of your days to come in and testify for them. That, I know that shows how strongly you feel that it's important that we make a bit of a difference for their, their bottom line.
So for, just from my information, is this is manufacturing? I mean, I'm sure there's design and testing and everything, but I mean, this is manufacturing, we're talking about expanding into, correct? You know, cutting steel and making.
They don't do.
Do-dads or?
Manufacturing, they really, really, a better title would be assembly.
Okay.
Products.
Components.
Yeah, it, it, there are metal products and fluid management devices.
Yep.
Products in these suspension.
So there's design and assembly.
Yeah, and so they don't manufacture.
And whoever's manufacturing could be anywhere, but that's fine.
And I, I actually, I should know, but I'm, I'm not sure if they, if these other products are manufactured locally or not. I don't think they are, but as I was driving in this morning, I just couldn't, this afternoon, I couldn't remember, so.
Opportunities for other contract manufacturers to provide components then too, because we've seen that.
It is a value-add proposition.
Yep, got it.
Assembling the components into a, a very viable, marketable product.
And is this in a racing market mostly, or as well as?
And recreational users.
Recreation.
I did ask that question, that I, I think there's a lot of acquirers, buyers of these motorcycles that want to specialize.
Did ask that question, that I, I think there's a lot of acquirers, buyers of these motorcycles that want to specialize.
Yeah.
You know, kind of fine tune to their riding.
Racing and recreational.
Yeah, it's kind of a high end market and they've got, I think they have captured the top end of it. They're known for the quality and the uniqueness of the product that they provide. So I guess at these events and, and traveling around where the sticker is on the side of the bike, there's a lot of prestige in that.
Ooh. Making sticker sales. So five jobs expected a year from now or so, so they're going to build into that.
Correct, and I think that's a sense of conservatism on their part. Tori didn't want to walk in here and say, you know, bing bang, I'm just going to make it happen. I think he was very conservative about, I gotta figure things out, because he just joined the company, I'm going to say in March or April, and he just relocated his family in July, so he's, he's being, he's being conservative. I think it'll be faster than that, but it doesn't matter, it's a good, it's a good transaction.
Great.
Very good. All right, any further questions? Do we have a motion?
I'll move approval of an economic development loan in the amount of $8,500 to Kref LLC.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Mr. Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Well, acknowledging these dollars are out of a fund for this purpose, you know, this is a, a, a part of our investment in the community to create those living wage jobs, you know, benefits and retirement. Housing is the problem right now, or the challenge, and they've all have, but this is real positive, be able to bring this economic activity to our area.
Yeah.
Great.
I, I would be, I mean, this, this is unrelated to approving the loan, but I, I, just kind of a question about where this loan program fits within the world of financing for, for businesses or, you know, new businesses, relocations. Is, these aren't at least the three we've looked at today, they're not huge amounts of money. And are they, I mean, so they're, these aren't the, you know, the primary pieces of funding that, of financing that people are using to, 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 you know, make their businesses happen, but, so I, I was just trying to get my, get a, get my head around, like, where do these fit for, for people and what? Because they're not that huge amounts of money, I'm guessing that part of the reason that they are worth pursuing is the, is the possibility that it becomes a forgivable loan to a grant. I mean, is that, is that basically?
Yeah, it makes total sense.
The attraction of this.
I think it's a good question, I, so I'm a recently retired banker, so when I'm reviewing these applications, I kind of talk to the committee around, I have to take my banker's hat off, because I think it's really important to understand that these are emerging companies that are stepping up to another level, that really haven't kind of proven themselves out yet. But, so little, little higher risk, obviously, but I think our track record is really strong in terms of the due diligence that we provided this program. But I think just in understanding that these are, you know, be a little bit more difficult for them to go out and maybe qualify for a conventional bank loan to fund growth, this type of growth. And so I think this is a really good fit for companies that are in this stage in their growth evolution. And it's additive, it's not the only piece to the financing puzzle, but we try not to make it too difficult to apply, but we also provide a certain amount of oversight to ensure that we're providing good safeguards around use of public funds.
And Don, I think you.
The comment I would make for, you know, Edco's target in economic development, traded sector companies, as you know, the average employment size, it just strikes me every time I think about this, I have to remind myself what this character means. The average size, employee size company in, in Bend is nine employees. I mean, it just, so that's what these companies we're talking about that, that need this. If you look at the, the prior loans, of which most of it, I was not involved with, we've had one loss. We've had three or four repayments where they just didn't work it out, but we got our, we, the fund was replenished. And I think overall loss is now below 1%. So I think it's been a good, it's, it's been a good deal. And if you were to look at the participating companies that have, there, many of the companies you would know. I mean, draft up, they're not the Lonzas of the world, you know, those kinds of size employees, but they're still companies you would recognize. So as an economic development tool, I only have two really viable financial incentives to offer. One is this relatively small, and the other is the enterprise zone. I don't, the, the state offers a whole list of programs, most of them just don't work for Bend. I try them all the time, I try to explore them, but these two are, work, so your, your initial comment, Phil, was how does this fit in? It's really important to me to, to attract small companies here and help them kind of round the edges of their, their growth path.
Thank you.
So Don, you just said that the average size then is nine?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
So I agree, we've, we've talked to a bunch since Bill and I have been on this committee, a bunch of folks and, yeah, and, and not all of them make it through the program, but like Don said, a lot of them, you'd recognize they're larger biomedical kind of organizations as well as manufacturing. We've been involved in the Sisters program as well as the Redmond one. And for the economic development folks, there's just not a lot of opportunity to offer something to come to Central Oregon, and we know the barriers here as well. So anything like this we can do to say, hey, we're behind you and we're here to help support you. That's really what this says to most of these companies. They, they have the ability to repay it eventually, they could probably struggle by and do it on their own, but the fact that the community's stepping up to encourage them to be here and to be successful means a lot to these folks.
And I think if I could just make one more comment, I think there's a really important component to this program, and it's really advising and counseling. So as we do our due diligence, we actually will make note of, of certain things that, hey, this is an area that I think there might be a, an opportunity for improvement or something you need to consider. And we certainly hear that a lot from Don and his team, that they're, they're performing a role of consultant and, and really being, creating a nurturing environment for these growth companies. So I think there's, it serves the county well to continue with this program and, and our estimation that this is something that, you know, really is a direct, kind of a correlation between the, the funds that we're providing and, and the growth opportunity that we're seeing in the community.
Well, and thanks for following through over the years, being on this committee, because I can imagine, you know, small business owner, as there's a growth phase or possible growth phase, it's tricky, it's a lot of work, it's double the work probably to try to expand. So being there to consult, to understand, you know, space needs, the big picture for, you know, how do you scale up manufacturing, or how much more do you need to do bookkeeping associated with a certain size? Just anything associated with it, and a lot of experience that you're offering, just giving them feedback, so thank you very much for that.
So do you have a couple more things, Don, you'll bring us next month?
More? Want more?
Well, we, we have a balance.
There you go.
We've had two fall out of the queue in the last six months, one because they were too small, they really too risky, and the other was had, was too well capitalized. So we've already had, just, I told you, early on, I mentioned, I've learned that there's this fine line, and we've experienced that in two episodes. I think these two and Amber, who've been on the, on the committee, not as long as you two, but a good long time, make it, make it easy. And there's so much perspective it brought into every meeting, it's, it's really, it's really efficient.
Wonderful.
Well, we still have, what, 250,000 almost in the fund, so it'll be.
Well, you keep adding to it, and I'm very appreciative.
Okay, great.
And we'll have more in the future, I'm sure.
There we go.
So thank you so much, thank you for joining us today.
And thank you for your interest.
Thank you.
I can't wait to go to the factory and see how they make the deodorant. Okay, Laura, I believe you're up next, thank you so much.
Thank you, commissioners. Laura Skendrick, management analyst for finance. So as you know, in fiscal year 21, Deschutes County received about $38 million in American Rescue Plan Act funding from the federal government, and in October of 2021, you awarded a $125,000 grant award to Central Oregon Community College. This was for their Child Care Workforce Business Accelerator Program. And so today with us, COIC, or excuse me, COCC is here with us to present you with the third in our series of childcare project updates, and I believe they're with us on Zoom today.
Did you see Ken on Zoom?
That's Chart and Catherine Brown as well.
Okay.
It is, I mean, we're, we're a half hour early for this item, so I'm.
Oh, I'll send him a text.
Thank you.
I think I have his number in my phone because I love his program, it's quite amazing.
Catherine, if you're there, do you know if Ken is available? I know we're running a little bit early.
Hi, yeah, we're running a little bit early, I just texted him, he had planned to get on at 2:20.
Okay, in about 10 minutes.
We do have the, the team available for item number seven, if, if and when you're ready to proceed to item number seven.
Okay, let's, should we do that? We'll do that. That makes sense.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll tell him now, forget it.
Moving fast today.
We're nimble, that's what you have to be, right?
Glad I came early.
I'm Kelly Madden, the chair of the Deschutes County Historic Landmarks Commission.
And she doesn't always dress like this.
No, I'm dressed on purpose, you know.
Okay.
See, with the, with the outfit, the real deal.
She's historic.
Yes.
And I have presents for you as well.
Oh, that's, are they less than $50 each?
They're free.
Okay.
They're priceless.
So forgive my scatteredness here, but, Nico, would you, would it be possible for you to shoot Peter an email?
Yes, I sure will.
Thanks. Tanya Saltzman, senior planner, and I'm here to, well, introduce Chair Madden, the chair of the Historic Landmarks Committee.
Oh, I've got my sunglasses on.
You do, but that's okay. And then this is just functioning as a, an annual check in, because we just completed the CLG Certified Local Government Grant Task. I just filed for reimbursement last week. I assume it'll take a little while before we do get our reimbursement, but this, we thought that this was a good time to check in with the board, talk about all the good stuff that the HLC has been doing, and provide a couple of documents for review, for, for the board to review. And let me know if you want to shuffle items, are we good?
We're good.
We'll be brief, but fun. Yeah, so. In the past, we've come to the Board of the County, Board of County Commissioners to request permission to apply for the Certified Local Government Grant, which is something that the HLC has been doing for, I believe, decades at this point. It's a, it's a non-competitive grant from the State Office of Historic Preservation. This year, we received $12,000, it was originally 10, but for whatever reason, they had extra money, so they, they granted it to us. And then the county provided an in-kind match of generally staff time for the same amount of money. So it was basically about $24,000 of total work. That was split roughly into kind of staff time and a couple of the documents that I will talk to you about in a moment. And then there were also some direct expenses that the City of Sisters, which is part of our, the purview of the county HLC that they worked on. And I provided to, as attachments to this memorandum, some of examples of what they did as part of this grant. So I'll just really briefly go over the things that they did. The big task, which I think is really great, was the historic resource story map. We paid for, the grant paid for a consultant to put this story map together. Attached to your memo is a couple of screenshots from that story map that looks at a lot of their historic resources from their reconnaissance level survey, and it has really neat old photographs as well as narration, and it kind of places it on a map. I personally like how they organized it, you can look at it by kind of era, you can look at it by theme, you can look at it by just different, different ways of kind of slicing and dicing those historic resources. The link to the story map itself is in this memo. There's only so much we can reproduce as a hard copy, but I highly recommend you, in your free time, click on that link and just poke around. It's a really great product and we're really proud of what they did. The next thing that the grant paid for was printing of historic walking tour brochures. This has been a real success in the past in the City of Sisters, and they apparently ran out, because it was, you know, they have them at, I believe it's shops and hotels and stuff like that in the City of Sisters, and it's, I included that as an attachment to this memo as well that gives you a sense of, you know, it's similar information to the story map, but in a printed format, so you can do your own self-guided walking tour. We thought that that was, especially in times of COVID, when there's fewer opportunities for kind of actual organized group events, having a self-guided walking tour is a great, a great thing. And the people at the City of Sisters have said that it's really successful and really popular, so that's why we did more of them. And lastly, the Three Sisters Historical Society, they do all kinds of really great activities, and they just wanted, they're working on a lot of oral history stuff from my, my understanding, so we funded some, some audio equipment to do that. That's the bread and butter of this kind of grant, being able to purchase things like that for local, local groups that are doing, they're doing the really, the good work with the historic preservation, so. Those are the things that came from the City of Sisters. Any questions so far, or thoughts, or? Next is, I'm going to go into just a brief review of the two big kind of staff, staff time lifts that were part of this, the grant. So the first is the HLC Policies and Procedures Manual, and these are both attached to your memos. The board might recall, it was in 2020, I believe, or culminated in 2020, the Planning Commission did a similar manual, a Policies and Procedures Manual, Nick was highly involved in that. And the, the goal of that was to provide a model, well, not the ultimate goal, but that Planning Commission manual provided a model and a template to do it for the HLC as well. Just to help new commissioners know what they're getting into, what their responsibilities are, what the HLC does, just a, a general overview of kind of all the, all the good work they do, and, you know, what, what in code actually points to what they, what their responsibilities are and that type of thing. So creating this manual, we had a subcommittee. Kelly was on it, she was one of the members, and, you know, we had a lot of back and forth with kind of editing and changing things, and just, just a really good collaborative process, I think, to do this Policies and Procedures Manual. This is the first time the HLC has had this, so they're very excited. You know, in upcoming years, we hope to potentially explore the idea of adding some new commissioners or, you know, adding to the membership, making it a little bit more diverse and just, you know, as people term out, or actually, they don't term out, but as people retire.
Young people is what we need, young people.
I did not say that, you said that. But we want to have a, a manual to just explain what, what, what this is, so that was the purpose of this. And I think we made a really nice, a good document. It also, a lot of it is just kind of code, which is not the most exciting of language, but it's really important to have that kind of down there to know what the responsibilities are and things like, you know, ethics and bias and things like that. We also reproduced our Goal Five Inventory in that process. I will note that, and this is relevant to both the manual as well as the policies, excuse me, the strategic plan, they both reproduced the Goal Five Inventory list of historic resources in there. We know that there's a couple of little errors in there, for instance, for one of those, one of the items, there's a tax slot error. I believe it changed at one point and it was wrong. Because that Goal Five Inventory rolls up into the comprehensive plan, that's kind of where it lives. We can't just change it in these documents themselves, so first it has to be changed in the comprehensive plan through a housekeeping amendment. It's kind of a convoluted process, but we know that there's been a couple of members of the public who've expressed interest in us fixing this, understandably. And we just want everybody to know that we are working on it, but it's not as simple as us just being, you know, in these documents here. It has to happen at the top and go down. So when that does happen, and we anticipate it will happen, probably within the next quarter or half year, we hope, then we will be able to make those, those corrections in these plan documents themselves, so.
So could you explain that, back up to the beginning of that, now I understand this, this scenario, but what was the?
In one case, it was, I believe it was the Lynch and Roberts sign, which is a historic, a Goal Five historic resource. The tax slot number changed, or it's, it changed and it was wrong in the first place in, when this was adopted. And so that was a wrong number in the comprehensive plan, which has now kind of reproduced itself in other documents, because we can't just change it in the strategic plan, we have to change it in the original comprehensive.
Because it's a reference back, okay.
Exactly, exactly, so it's, it's, it's not the simplest process, but we are aware of it and we're gonna, we're gonna tackle that. And I know it's, it's a long time coming to do, do that, so we're on it.
Great, Tanya, that's what we like to hear.
Good. Yeah, and then, so the Policies and Procedures Manual was the first document. The second main document from the grant was the Strategic Plan, and I think this is the one that is the more exciting one, I think. And this, you know, is done every, every five years. And this was just a, it's a, it recognizes the role of the HLC, which is, operates in a little bit of a tricky space. You know, the HLC, it, it. You know, the HLC, it addresses the unincorporated county as well as the City of Sisters. The other cities within Deschutes County have their own HLCs and their own kind of marching orders and responsibilities and things like that. So they are, the HLC is a reviewing body, so if ever there's some sort of land use application that's touching a historic resource, or someone wants to change something or demolish something, that's what the HLC exists to see as a hearings body. We don't see that very often. I can't even think of the last time.
And we're nonjudicial, so it's not like we have a lot of, you know, authority behind, but we do have the ability to make decisions that are done properly.
Yeah, and say, you know, okay, you can, this is a minor decision. It can be processed administratively or what have you, things like that. So that is a primary purpose of the HLC.
And an example of that would be recently, the Eastern Star Grange wanted to do something to their parking lot, which wasn't part of the Goal Five Inventory, so I might be getting this wrong because this isn't my full-time job, but. And I think what happened was, we just decided administratively, and that would be, Tanya and I decided that because it wasn't part of the Goal Five Inventory, that please do put gravel on your parking lot.
Yeah, it wasn't affecting the actual, the meaning of the historic, what made it historic. So the HLC is really helpful for matters such as that. So the Strategic Plan kind of operates within that space, recognizing what the HLC can do, which is, you know, they have, the members have a tremendous amount of knowledge about all things historic in the county. They're not, they don't have a separate source of funding besides the CLG grant, so the HLC can't get out and help people fix their windows, for instance, physically. They can point people to the right resources, but the Strategic Plan aims to sort of capture that and recognize the strengths of the HLC, what they can do, while also recognizing what's kind of outside of their purview. So this was quite a fun process. We, it was compressed a little bit, but we had a public outreach process that included a couple of virtual open houses, which actually, in reality, ended up being one instead of two because of technical difficulties, but it was still good. We had a survey, an online survey about kind of what's important to people in terms of historic preservation. I provided a little bit of a summary of kind of what the salient points were. The most highly ranked goal for the Strategic Plan was increasing public awareness of the benefits of historic preservation. Why do we want to preserve the past? Why is this important? I thought that was interesting. And then we had a few stakeholder interviews as well. We had one with the City of Bend HLC staff, the Community Development Director from Sisters, and a representative from the Deschutes National Forest, Sisters Ranger District, and he's an archaeologist, so he had some really interesting thoughts about things. And awareness is really kind of the biggest need, biggest issue. As far as the survey, we received 27 responses to the survey, which is pretty good, I think. And we bundled that in. We worked with the HLC over several meetings. Staff worked with the Chair, Kelly, and then I believe we had a subcommittee for that as well, and just a lot of back and forth with edits and about the goals and potential goals, actions, and policies governing, governing where the HLC wants to focus or where they don't want to focus. A lot of it is just working with partners that do have a little bit more, more resources, either technical or financial, and just helping get the word out and helping just, you know, publicize historic preservation as a general concept. You know, again, it's difficult for the HLC to get super specific and super tangible, but within the, you know, within the confines of where they operate, I think the Strategic Plan addresses a lot of goals. And that's been provided as well to the Board as part of this memorandum. With that, so we have two kind of actions. In theory, so the HLC voted to approve amongst themselves each of those documents, the Strategic Plan and the Policies and Procedures Manual. Following in the model of how the Board treated the Policies and Procedures Manual for the Planning Commission, we, staff requests that the Board acknowledges, and that was deemed, deemed the legal, we ran that by Dave at the time, an acknowledgement of those plans, or obviously, if you have any questions or thoughts about the plans, we welcome those as well. So that's our kind of first order of business, and then I'll turn it over to Kelly.
Okay.
That was a lot of talking, I realize.
No, no, no.
No, it's good. I'm, I am getting ready for Historic Preservation Month 2023, and it's going to be all the month of May, and we're going to have a general store. We've done this stuff before, and Nick knows me, and I've made, I make bookmarks and cards out of old, you know, ephemeral, old books, old newspapers, old things. And so I made some things to just show you the kinds of things will be at the general store, and feel free to pick a few while I talk, so you're not going to be too bored.
Who's last?
Oh, Groves. Groves, okay. So I just wanted to say that I have been on the Historic Landmarks Commission since its inception in 2012, I believe, is correct. And I want to, all the commissioners that are on the Board are the same commissioners. No one's left. We've had a couple people drop and move, but everyone is still the original Board 10 years later, with the exception of our new member, Commissioner Dan Ellingson, who comes from us, from the Bend Pioneer Association. So I just wanted to say that I just love working with these people, and she said it all. So all I want to say today is I want to thank the people that do this work. And so I'm going to start with Nick and tell you that one of my fondest experiences was being with Nick in a haunted house when we were doing some work, and he was like pulling on the back of my coat because he was like, Kelly, Kelly, Kelly. So Nick has been behind me.
He was so scared, is that what?
Yeah, yeah, he was scared, and I was like, I'm going to get the ghosts for you. So I really enjoyed working with Nick and Peter and Tanya, and back in the day, Zecharia Heck and Matt Martin, and Will back there, Will Graves, Groves. I haven't worked with Will very long. But the, I also want to thank Commissioner Sharon Leckey, Commissioner Rachel Stemich, Commissioner Dan Ellingson, Commissioner Chris Whorting Jones, Commissioner Dennis Schmidling. They are the commissioners for the Historic Landmarks Commission. And the saddest thing for me is we can't get together because we become a quorum, and all I want to do is hang out with these people and go look at haunted houses. I also want to give a shout out to Kelly Cannon-Miller at the Deschutes Historical Museum, and also my husband, Rick Trelevan, and he helps me explore every inch of the Out County. So I'm, I'm the person that's in charge of like Tumalo, Plainview, Sisters, up North County, down South County. So all those neglected places, Skyline Forest, you know, all of that, all of those neglected places are near and dear to me in my heart and to everybody on the commission. And they are fabulous people, and I just want to thank you for the support. And I also want to say we're probably one of the only historic landmark commissioners around that have ever put together a Policies and Procedures Manual. And I can remember back when the pandemic started, Peter had told me, well, it's hard work. It's not very sexy, but it probably needs to be done, and in light of water issues and what's going on with the county and how the county's going to grow, it's very important to have all of that structure in place. And then with the Strategic Plan, it's very exciting, and Nick was trying to get us to do that, you know, 10 years ago, and we're like, what? What's a Strategic Plan? What's a CLG? But we've come a long way, and I'm very excited for Historic Preservation Month 2023. So keep your eyes open, and thank you for all the work that you guys do, all of you. It's very, very appreciated. Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly.
Okay, that's it.
For a proclamation in, is it May 2023?
May 2023. It's the first one we've had in three years.
We do that for, you know, special.
People?
Special things that need to be recognized, special, special events or, you know, kind of months that are dedicated.
Okay, well, I will put that in my notes and get back with you all.
I think that has been done in the past. Yeah, the Deschutes County HLC has kind of stood down during COVID with the Preservation Month, but.
We'll be back in full force.
We can definitely work on getting some sort of announcement. That would be great, because the more PR, the better, frankly, with this kind of thing, so.
It is interesting to note in, you know, of all the historical sites in Deschutes County, I remember that Catherine Grace Van Devert died of the Spanish Flu in, before, I think we were actually a county. Weren't we a county in 1919, and she died in 1918 or whatever, that epidemic? So, yeah, they actually have her grave as a historical site south off of 97. So I looked it up because I thought that's something I kind of remember. Anyway, as someone who got their degree in history, thank you very much for preserving it because otherwise we could lose it, and there's a lot to be learned.
Yeah, and the thing that I'm really interested in, and this will come on in the future, are arbor glyphs, because we don't have a lot of Out County, those would be writings on trees, marks on trees and things that you find, tree blazes and stuff like that, because Out County, there's not a lot of physical brick and mortar things that need to be preserved, or there's a lot of things to be preserved, especially in the skyline forests, like Fremont Trail Blazes that are still marked on trees that probably at some point we need to get to, but that's done. And who knows, it'll burn up. You never know what's going to happen. Thank you very much.
Well, so we've got a old stone building at the corner of, over here in Greenwood and Bond, in fact, so let's all work together on that when we figure out what a repurposing of that building is going to be.
That would be Ben's?
Oh, I know.
Yeah.
Oh, I know, but it's going to be a community discussion the moment we decide, oh, well, this is what we think we're going to do. And also, you know, our Worrell Park, we talked about expanding some parking possibilities, you know, changing the footprint of that park, and we sure got some people excited about that topic now. So as I say, these are just maybe fringe to your core, you know, focus here, but that's community conversations that are.
Well, and then the water issues with canals and historic rights and all of that, that's a biggie too, as you know.
Yeah.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay.
So wait, we, so if I could just ask about, so the acknowledgement, it's kind of like a step down from adoption or?
In theory, I mean, acknowledgement was done, that's how it was done last time around for the Planning Commission, I believe. It was, it was just a vote done in the minutes. It wasn't any sort of document number. That's what was the process last time. So I believe it's just a slightly different, slightly less formal way of approving it. Nick, I don't know if you have this.
And so there's a published date on these documents, yeah.
Those dates are from the approval of the HLC.
Yep.
Yes, and we held them, we held off on the, because the Policies and Procedures Manual was done in February, but we wanted to present these together to the Board kind of at the end of the grant to make it one nice package.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right.
So do we, do we need an acknowledgement motion then?
I would.
Yes.
Okay, so.
So I'll move acknowledgement of the Historic Landmarks Commission's Policies and Procedures Manual and Historic Preservation Strategic Plan.
And I will second it.
Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes.
Wonderful.
Great, thank you for your efforts.
Yes.
Thanks, you guys.
And we can't wait to see you again.
And we will be back actually in the next, for the next cycle of CLG grant. We're going to start thinking about that soon. So we'll probably be back applying for that in the spring.
Thank you, Tanya. Thank you very much.
Thanks, you guys.
Thank you.
So now we're going to go back to childcare. Is Ken on now?
Yes, so we have Ken and Catherine from COCC with us.
Okay, lovely. Thank you, Laura.
Yes.
All right. Do I dare ask if I, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you in a board meeting.
Good job.
Excellent, excellent. Well, it's a pleasure for myself and Catherine to come speak to you today. This is a follow-up item as it relates to the Early Childcare Business Accelerator. So back in fall of 2021, the, of course, the commissioners allotted us $125,000 for a pilot program to launch home-based childcare businesses throughout Central Oregon. So I was going to come and give you an update, but before we get too far in that, I also want to introduce Catherine Brown. Catherine Brown has recently joined my team, focused really on all the different early child education business programs that we're going to be launching over the next couple of years, and we'll talk a little bit about that in the future. So wanted to make sure that she gets to bring along, gets to experience the same thing of speaking with our county commissioners, so to speak.
Hello.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate your time.
Oh, welcome, Catherine.
So with that, just a little bit of backdrop. Again, our grant was $125,000, and it was focused on really trying to launch home-based childcare businesses, and this was done in partnership with Neighbor Impact, whereby the Small Business Development Center at COCC would be teaching the aspects of starting, running, managing a daycare facility, childcare facility, as well as the Neighbor Impact responsibilities would be focusing on the recruitment of individuals to the course, and the elements regarding the licensing and how to become licensed with the Early Learning Division. The desire was to run this for, as a pilot for a year, and then make any adjustments and see how the program ended up. And I'm pleased to share with you that we have run, currently, we've run 51 people through the, through the program. And with that, we have had, check my, year, 32 complete that program. Of the 32 that have completed it, we have issued startup grants for those who, startup grants of $5,000 for them to start their home-based childcare business itself. And we actually have several more grants that are pending. It's really just dependent upon them to complete the licensing with the state of Oregon. So again, quite a few people started, 32 completed, ordered 17 grants with that, and of the, of the folks that have opened up childcare facilities, it's created somewhere between 100 and 120, depending upon how you do the math, new childcare slots for Central Oregon. So very pleased with this result, so pleased that we continue to run the program. And we just started our fifth cohort this fall, I guess, two weeks ago. Yeah, two weeks ago we started it. It's also worth noting that we are running this program both in English and in Spanish, so we've, the numbers I gave you included both English and Spanish participants and graduates of the course. And we'll continue to offer this program in the foreseeable future. We've had so much interest in this, this program, that we've had, we actually went out for another grant with Neighbor Impact about six months ago, and have developed funding that to run this program through, probably somewhere between June and September of 2024 is when we think we have enough funding for right now, so for at least two more years. Excellent news. In addition to that, the, the concept of taking people through classroom experience and one-on-one advising, we've decided to expand the program and create a new offering focused on launching commercial-based childcare businesses. So this would have around 50 childcare slots per business, and we would take them through an extensive program. We're working on the details now, but somewhere between 30 and 35 hours of classroom time, 20 hours of one-on-one advising, as well as bringing in many guest speakers about what it takes to launch a commercial facility versus a home-based operation. And with that, we're working with Neighbor Impact that at the end of that program, if they completed and launched their commercial-based program, we would also offer them a fairly significant grant to get their business off the ground. So we're working on that now. Catherine's heavily involved in this, and she'll be writing the curriculum. We're working with Neighbor Impact on the application process and the recruitment of it, and we hope to start that program in Q1 of next year. The last thing I would mention is, again, there's been so much excitement around this, is that several other childcare resource organizations have contacted us, along with SBDCs, and we are currently, with Catherine's help, looking at how do we take what we've done here in Central Oregon and launch this at other SBDCs across the state in partnership with CCNRs. So we have a goal within the next two years to launch this home-based childcare program in at least three other areas throughout Central Oregon, excuse me, throughout Oregon, not Central Oregon, because of the, really the interest level and the uniqueness of taking individuals through both the licensing element and running a business at the same time.
Ken, do you have an idea what kind of funding, what kind of grant funding you're going to make it available for the commercial childcare programs?
Yeah, so right now, we're thinking it's probably going to be around $300,000 per completed participant.
You know, we had extra, we had extra funding, like a half a million dollars that was allocated out for smaller groups that needed, you know, startup funding. I'm wondering if that, but you're not, you're not actually going to start these classes until September of next '23, is that right?
Commercial, the commercial-based program will launch in early Q1 of next year, so January, probably February, March-type timeframe.
Of the next, of just, oh, something soon?
Yes, yeah.
Oh, good.
Four or five months, tops. And that program will probably run, you know, I mean, it's, it's a lot more difficult to start a commercial-based childcare business. There's more rules, there's more planning requirements. You need to be thoughtful about finding space, and if you can get space, and then, of course, building it out. So that program, you know, will likely take somewhere between six, six-plus months to complete.
How long does a background check take, Ken? Do you have any idea? Because aren't all employees, don't they have to get through a background check?
Yeah, that's a really good question, Commissioner Dare. So when we first. So when we first started this program, and that's one of the reasons why you see the number of participants dropping to the number of completed participants, right? So we started with 51, and then we ended up with 32 completing the program. And what we found was that there was a series of prerequisites that as they started the course, they would start their background check, they would start checking with their, on their lease, would their landlord allow it to operate out of their, out of their apartment or out of the duplex or their home. And in addition to that, you have to go through a water testing. And what we found is, when we started the program, they would also start that process, a part of the program, and they would get halfway through and find out that they did not complete the, or, excuse me, did not pass the background check, or maybe there was other reasons that they couldn't meet the requirements, so to speak. Landlord said no, is another example that had happened. And so what we've done is, before they start the program now, we have prerequisites that they start that process and get their information about their background check, as well as landlord and starting the water testing. That's reduced the amount of what I would call attrition that we see in the classes. We started that this summer when we ran the cohort, and we only had, I want to say, one or two people drop out as opposed to, say, five or six people dropping out of it. That background check can be fairly quick, you know, two to three weeks, or depending upon the amount of documentation and the number of people that were checking, it can take several weeks.
Well, this, and I, when, when you were going through some basic statistics for us, you mentioned a number of anticipated new childcare slots resulting from the 32 people who had completed, and something, there was a cough or something, I didn't hear the number, could you, could you go back and fill that number in for me?
Sure, we believe it's somewhere between 100 and 120.
Right.
And it varies because of the number of children that each person takes, right? Some take six, some take nine, some take three, but it's somewhere between 100 to 120 at this point.
Very exciting.
We had a meeting at COCC last week, and Dr. Chesney is incredibly proud of the program that you've done. So it's nice to know that you're now thinking, expanding it, going commercial, and actually going statewide. I think that is, that is really wonderful news, because it's a problem, not just here in Central Oregon, but childcare is, it's a much bigger problem.
Well, and we have an excellent technical resource that's at every community college in this state with an SBDC, so why not try to leverage that technical system and partner up with other CCNRNRs to create this program? I think there's no reason why not. And in fact, Catherine and I gave testimony to the, to a legislative committee just last week about what we're doing, how we're doing it, you know, in partnership with, with Karen Prowl and the folks at Neighbor Impact at the same time, because we think there's a compelling case that this is something that could be funded out of the legislature and partner up with the technical organizations that do this work today.
And when you are collaborating with these other SBDCs around the state, I, I mean, you've had to invest a certain amount to develop this curriculum. Do they, do they compensate you for coming and sharing or, or contribute? Or is it, is it just kind of, within your network, this is what you do for each other?
Yeah, so we're really trying to take an approach of, we'll share the content, and it's not so much about the content, it's more about sharing the program and putting some foundation around, what does a successful program look like, you know? Handing out the slides or handing out the notebook is one thing, but you need to have an excellent instructor. You need to have a solid partnership with your CCNRN, you need to have some other kinds of services or a network after the people leave the program, that they continue to have a support network and talk. So what Catherine's actually working on right now is really kind of a standard of, if you want to have this program, here's what's going to make it successful, and here's all, all the elements you need with it. And yes, we'd be providing it at no cost to them, provided that they meet the standards of the program. I've said to Catherine several times, the last thing I want to do is hand out this material, and they don't really have the foundational pieces in place, place, and the relationships with the community. Otherwise, it will, I don't believe it to be successful.
Well, I mean, that, what, what you just described, you know, sharing both, sharing both curriculum and experience with other communities around the state, it, you know, that, that seems like a pretty good justification for state investment, you know, to support this work, you know, that kind of dissemination of this work, if I, if, you know, in my opinion. So I, I hope you guys have, have some kind of vehicle to advocate for that, and if not, talk with us.
Yeah, well, thank you for, for that offer. I've had some discussions with Mark Gregory, who's the State Director for the Oregon SBDC, about, you know, creating a policy document about what we're trying to do with this kind of program, and how we could launch that in other places across the state from a, from a state funding level as opposed to trying to bootstrap it together in a county-by-county area, or a region-by-region perspective. So we'll see how that goes, so we'll start working on that early next year.
Right. And hopefully you've got some, some allies in the, I forget what the Early Learning Division is a division of, but there's, you know, there, there are state organizations, there, there's, there are state agencies that are, you know, focused on education and youth as well.
Yep. Yep, I believe it falls under DHS, so.
Sounds right.
And you're not actually, are you offering, you're not offering Spanish at this time for fall or not?
We are.
You are?
Yep, we are, we just started our cohorts within the last two weeks, and that'll run into November. So we're running it in both English and in Spanish. That's, one of the other key learnings we had is, the first time we ran it as one class, and we had a translator, and we found that wasn't really as effective, so now we have an English instructor and a Spanish instructor running this two separate cohorts, or two separate classes, I should say.
I would think that would be really beneficial.
Yeah.
Well, one of the items I'm seeing here is that, you know, this is the support system, you know, you were, we're educating, we're welcoming people that want to do this, getting them started, and then, you know, in the future, there's going to be a support system. All the people that have gone through this, this training, be able to come back. And I got to imagine, you know, sometimes there's an evolution, young family, stay-at-home kids, mom wanting to make some extra opportunities, but then, you know, maybe 10 and 12 years later, they want to rotate out and find the next, you know, next home-based childcare also. So hopefully, there's a whole ecosystem being built here.
Yeah, and we definitely, there's another organization that's ran out of Portland, but it has a statewide influence called the Oregon Childcare Alliance, and they're really a group of individuals that try to create these network opportunities throughout different regions of the state. And we see that's another potential connection point to, to have that community base of learning after they complete the program. So they have people to talk to, a network to work with on some of the same kinds of issues that they face.
Good.
Great, oh.
Well, it sounds like, yeah, great investment, it's paying off and adding slots.
Yeah, yes, exactly.
Thank you for your efforts.
And it's great that we're going to be able to run it for at least two more years, right? So, and, and my, as I've, I've chartered Catherine to, to figure out is, how do we get it funded beyond the next two years, right? So that's one thing about the home-based childcare business is that they don't last very long, because it's just the natural cycle of a parent wanting to run it for a few years, and then they, their, their child has a different place, and maybe they're in a different place in school, and so that they want to shut down their business. Well, this tells me that we're always going to have to have a program like this, right? We're always going to have to have a feeder system, so let's figure out how we fund it permanently.
Yes, consistently feeding this program, because it, you're right. That's why we're so really appreciative of how you stepped in, you immediately added Spanish and English. I mean, it was, considering we approved it in October, and you were way ahead of the game, so thank you. And Catherine, thank you for joining.
Well, thank you for all your support, much appreciated.
Oh, no, we are, we are much more appreciative of you, so thank you.
You bet.
Yep, have fun.
Have a great day.
I believe now we are to item, the next item, the medical examiner services. Seems like all the appropriate people are in the room.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, for the record, Whitney Hale, Deputy, not District Attorney, Deputy County Administrator.
Where did you go to law school?
Yes, I have recently.
We would absolutely hire Whitney.
Oh, there you go.
Steve Gunnels, I'm Chief Deputy District Attorney.
And this afternoon, we're here to talk to the Board about medical examiner services, which is a topic that I know you've been tracking since our budget process this past spring. So I'm going to talk a little bit about kind of our steps that we've taken since the budget process and where we are in the process, and then turn it over to Steve to talk a little bit about the role and function of the medical examiner's office. So as the Board knows, our current county medical examiner, Dr. Janet Van Ambergh, is retiring, and her contract ends at the end of this month. And so in preparation for that transition, administration worked closely with the District Attorney's Office and staff from the Sheriff's Office, as well as our state medical examiner's office, to put together an RFQ and get this opportunity out to see if there was interest in the community to fill this role. We initially did not have any respondents to the RFQ, and so we issued an extension to that. And when we issued that extension, we had two proposers respond and indicate that they're interested in providing services. One is a physician who would be filling the primary role of medical examiner, and the second is a physician's assistant that would be in a deputy capacity and assisting the physician. So staff is currently in the process, that working group that I mentioned earlier, with finalizing negotiations on contract terms. And so today, we're really seeking Board approval to authorize county administrator and district attorney signature on the medical examiner contract. Once we have that contract ready for signature, which we are hopeful will be later this week. But with that, I'll turn it over to Steve to talk a little bit about the role and function of the ME.
So the, the medical examiner in Deschutes County is a really critical partner for law enforcement and for the prosecution. And the, the most important aspect of their job is coming in and examining a body, the body of a person who died under suspicious circumstances in a circumstance, in a situation that may turn into a criminal case, a criminal prosecution. They come in very soon after an event, they examine the body, they, they review medical records of the person, they speak with the deputies or the officers who are on scene to find out what are the circumstances leading to this, this death, and then they render an opinion as to whether the manner or cause of death is suspicious or criminal, or more likely, and much more commonly, whether it's a natural medical cause of death. And in fact, the, the ratio is probably, based on my, the phone calls that I get, probably 100 to 1, a natural death, not suspicious to, to the one suspicious cause of death. But it's really important that we have that expert medical opinion available to us to, to make those determinations when, you know, sometimes the, the cause of death is not readily apparent to a layperson or a police officer examining the body, not understanding medical history and so on. And we've had a number of times when it appeared that there may have been abuse leading to the death of the person, or neglect leading to the death of the person. But when the medical examiner reviews the medical records, they come to the determination that this was a, a slow process of death that, that gives the appearance of neglect or abuse, but it is not neglect or abuse, it's somebody who is well taken care of, but that's, but the, the state of their body at the time of death is such that to a layperson, it would appear that they've been neglected, when in fact, they've not. And so that, that's equally as important to, in my view, to say, no, this is a, this was a well-cared-for person, and, and so you don't need to conduct this, a criminal investigation about this. When, when you're lacking that important piece of the puzzle, police will, will engage in a big, expensive investigation of the person. The person may be charged with crimes when, in fact, they had taken good care of this loved one. And so it's, it's because of the medical examiner, and particularly a skilled medical examiner with, with medical training, who can, who can come in and, and render a, an expert opinion that is reliable. Dr. Van Ambergh has been excellent, in my opinion, she's available all the time. I don't blame her for retiring, because she has been available every time that I've needed to talk to her about a, a death scene or an incident. She goes out herself to some when it's, when they are, when they need that extra level of review of a medical doctor. But for the most part, she reviews the, the findings of her assistants, her, her deputy medical examiners. And they are also an excellent group of people who are medically trained and highly motivated to do this work. It takes a special kind of person to go out to these scenes and to examine a body, to examine the medical records, and to, to render an opinion about the manner and cause of death. The, the medical examiner position is a statutory position, and it's their duty in every county to render an opinion as to the manner and cause of death of every unattended death that occurs in Deschutes County. And unattended means that they were not under direct medical care at the time of death. And so it's, they're busy, they're, I get death calls every day. The deputy medical examiners get at least as many calls as I do, and likely more, to, to go out or to, sometimes they don't go out, but they just review the medical records, they talk to the deputy on scene, and they, they render an opinion that this was an expected and likely natural death. So all that said, this contract that's been drafted by county council, to me, looks good, I've reviewed it. It looks good to me, I'm not a civil attorney, so I don't have that kind of expertise, but what I, what I see in here looks good, like something that we would sign. It is, this contract is contingent on the, the proposed substitutes for Dr. Van Ambergh passing a background check that the Sheriff's Office has volunteered to conduct. And I think that's appropriate, because we need people who are, you know, who have a, a strong desire to do this kind of work and no, no issues with, with them being appointed to do that. I don't think we, any of us want to be in a position where we have to replace this, this position in the next six months. And so I, I personally fully support this contract.
It's actually 123,000 more than what we paid this last year, so I guess our doctor maybe should have asked for more money.
Well, I think, and it also sounds like the office is just seeing more cases come to them. As the county grows, their workload is growing as well, so I think that also may be a factor that Dr. Van Ambergh has certainly communicated as we've been working closely through the summer, so.
We've, yeah, we've had, in terms of criminal deaths, we've had a, a busy few years. Since, since March of 2020, we've had 14 murder victims in Deschutes County, which is astonishing in my experience, and, and that's just a, that work of, of the medical examiner. And and that's just a tiny, that work of of the medical examiner with those kinds of cases is just a tiny sliver of what they do. Most of the things, as I mentioned, that they respond to are natural deaths that they are obligated to examine in the same way that they examine suspicious deaths.
And really, other than the the budget, which you highlighted, Commissioner, there are the only other change that I would note for the board that's in the draft that we're working on has to do with space. And so as the board knows, there's space for the medical examiner function in the Kingwood Building, but that building is not ready, and so the staff have expressed a desire to have some space available to them in the interim. And so that is likely something that we'll be trying to see if we can find a solution for, and if so, address in the contract that would be brought forward, is some temporary small amount of space for their team until the Kingwood Building is ready.
How much space are they looking for, Whitney? I can't remember.
Was described to me in the temporary capacity as kind of an office and some storage space, so we're just looking for, working with Lee Randall on kind of what exists and what may work well for them, and it sounds like there are a few potential options he's chasing down, so.
My one other question about this is, we were funding this out of general fund, correct?
Yes.
I just wanted to confirm that that was.
So it's been a little process here. We want to thank Dr. Van Amberck and all the, you know, folks that are supporting her that have kind of grown the system. It was just whatever needed to be done, it got done, and, you know, hopefully build back to cover the cost, so that was kind of the plan. So this is taking it to the next level. I know I've been involved with discussions for the state medical examiner's office. There's an expectation or a statement somewhere in the state saying after you get to about 250,000 that maybe the state will come in and do something, which we generally have that for the tri-county area, but the state isn't in a spot to respond to that at this point in time. So we're taking it to the next level, a little bit more business-like for this contract. And, yeah, I mean, hopefully, they're going to be, you know, on call, ready to go, like they always have been for for the citizens here in Deschutes County. It's a, it's one of those basic functions that we hear about it in the smallest counties, there's, you know, maybe somebody that's doing it, maybe somebody has to be called in from the next county. You don't even know what's going on, but this is putting it in place a little bit more officially here.
So I know that in our traffic situation, because we have millions of tourists, about a quarter of our traffic issues or court cases are with the tourists, is it a quarter of the deaths then in Deschutes County? That that wouldn't be that many, would there?
It's it's unusual for somebody out of town to be a the subject of a death investigation here, but it it happens maybe once a month, something like that. It's it's small. That's a small number.
So the contract has been reviewed. I mean, is it in a done finalized fashion, or is this?
I think we're still working on a few minor tweaks. Dave Doyle was the author and really has helped us take our existing agreement and and, you know, make some updates that the team has reviewed. So I think our plan was to come to you today. If the board were to, you know, move approval today for county administrator and district attorney signature, we would then be working with the proposers this week on their review and their, you know, of the of the contract language that we have put together.
So there's a document number, and it's a contract, but it might slightly change slightly. So I'm just making sure I understand. And I'm supportive, this is.
Similar to other contracts, like the workers' comp, third-party administrator that the board approved. If there isn't a protest, then we will negotiate the contract and approve it administratively. So it's similar to that.
I'll move approval of county administrator and district attorney signatures on document 2022-781, a contract for medical examiner services.
And I will second it.
So any further discussion?
I just acknowledging that it's, it sounds like it's not a finalized document yet, but that's the intention.
Okay, let's see. I was still working on my numbers, thinking, why? I I I mean, okay, so the good news is, she she's leaving the end of this this week, so we definitely need somebody else. It just seems, you know, that it's definitely a huge bump up into the cost for the county. So anyway, let's see, who made the motion? Commissioner DeBonne? Commissioner Chang made it. Okay, Commissioner Chang.
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Thank you for putting all these pieces in order to be in this important service.
I I don't think we can find someone to do it as a traveling medical examiner, could we? You know, there's a lot of them, maybe that's what we're getting now, because aren't they way more expensive? Thank you. Thank you very much. Nice to see you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Is there any other items? Nothing else today?
I've got two other items. I was able to travel on Friday to John Day for the LCDC Land Conservation Development Commission, or whatever it is. And on Friday's agenda, the afternoon was a roundtable, and so I was there with a couple other Commissioners around the state, community development directors. Nick, you know, is part of the commission. He was remote on video. In fact, yeah, I mean, it was interesting because I was thinking, as I was testified, if you were there, it would have been a very, a different dynamic for me, because I kind of forgot you were at the meeting, and I was having a good time being engaged with everybody. But I mentioned Section 36, you know, a section of land, southern Deschutes County, that is zoned forest. And I just explained that, you know, we've got a lot of history of people that have owned these properties for many, many years. They come into our community development apartment, they said, okay, now I'm going to retire, I'd like to build a house on my property that I've owned for 40 years. And we tell them, well, it's forested zone, the template dwelling, and, you know, you might have to go get a land use attorney to understand what we're even doing here. So my point is, John Jennings, these DLCD staff said, oh, yeah, we need to, we need to tie that one up, or something, he said, I forget what the terminology was. But there was an intention for him to be the field staff to get engaged on that and figure out what does, you know, a solution or or an end state look like. So that was really good from my point of view, because I've gotten calls, I don't know if you've, Commissioners have received those calls also, but sometimes it's like, you know, a five-acre parcel in the rural with people kind of thinking or intending on building for many, many years and finding out that it's a big uphill battle is. Maybe it may be a disconnect in our state land use system, so that's what I'm saying. Also, you know, the accessory dwelling units, you know, just the day before, maybe that morning, the State Department of Forestry put out the concept that it's going to be another year before they get publishing the wildfire risk map again. So I asked specifically in the room with with everybody, is is it a hard dependency on accessory dwelling units? The answer is yes. You know, so that really, you know, make, gives us clarity that, you know, now we're going to be another year out for accessory dwelling units, according to the current system, so we'll see where it goes from there. And then there's also testimony from some of the other planning staff. I think it was Grant County Director, she really supported me in that concept of the Section 36. She said, yeah, we have people come in to our front desk, they ask about building a house, they find out about some of the rules, and then they come back another year later, and they ask about building a house, and they learn more about the rules, and then they never come back. They just go build their house.
I was going to say, they just go do it.
Yeah, exactly. And, I mean, it's just good for staff to hear that. It's like, oh, yeah, that happens at the front desk, and and that's what's happened in Section 36 for us, you know, people have unpermitted structures. Yeah, so it was just, it was a real good roundtable, so I don't know if Nick has any other statements from what he saw.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. Just two comments. One is that Peter just shared with me a moment ago, he's already reached out to John Jennings to follow up based on the conversation, just to say if John and DLCD are open to addressing the zoning issues, which we know there are platted lots, there's a whole, there are legal and unpermitted dwellings throughout Section 36. So for Peter to reach out to John, just to say, so what are the possibilities? What are the options? What are the avenues to address it? Piece number one. And then piece number two, in addressing the connection between the rural accessory dwelling units and the fire risk map, that could be something to address with our our new lobbyist when we meet with them here in a couple of weeks. Is there a legislative concept to to either make a separation, or is there a way to address it otherwise so that we can move forward?
I already asked Senator Finley if it's possible to get a divorce, because when I first heard with 762 married to 391, and do we not need accessory dwelling units in Deschutes County, and don't we already have a lot of building standards that are really at the top, you know, as far as they aren't going to burn, or we're going to do it right, everything? So I'd already asked Senator Finley if that was a possibility. I just feel like, oh, my gosh, a couple more years down the road. We started testifying, it was four years ago. Yes, it's unbelievable. And here it is, Oregon, with not enough places for people to live in our county.
In a conversation with Director Bateman from DLCD, she said, well, can't everybody just build to the highest standards and just move on? I'm like, I don't think so. You know, so she's the director, and she, and it wasn't clear, the State Department of Forestry had just put out the notification, it's going to be like, well, but, you know, her just kind of off-the-cuff comment was, well, just build to the defensible space standards and move on. But it's not like that. You can't do that.
I think we need a divorce.
Yeah, we actually checked that path when we were creating Senate Bill.
I know, yeah, to get clarity, to get clarity on what.
And then they they backed off from that path of just build to the highest standard until such time that the map was was created. They said, they just tied it together directly to the map.
Yep.
And of course, nobody saw, foresaw the potential that the map would be released and then pulled back and then a new timeline. So the the timing could be right for a legislative legislative fix. But just back, going back to the LCDC meeting, it was really encouraging to see such great participation by so many people in eastern Oregon with the commission and a really good, robust discussion. The questions were, you know, what's what's working well in your in your community or region with the statewide planning program, or what needs to be addressed? And there were really great remarks on both sides. Some people talked about, you know, they 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 really liked the way Oregon looks compared to when they go across the border to Idaho, but by the same token, there are issues that really need to be addressed in our system, more flexibility with some smaller cities to achieve their intended outcomes while withholding, upholding the, really, the tenets of the of the land use planning program. It was really positive, I thought.
Well, and I would assert that there's there's some zoning in the rural that became resource land that was just too too hard of a lift at the time. And there's probably, you know, if we can get to it without too much political overhead and baggage, there's probably some opportunities out there that are not even that controversial. But the system has just evolved such that everybody's taken their corner, got their clarity, and and let's just stop. When in doubt, stop, instead of, you know, whatever the next step might be. So Nick Green is the consultant that used to be the city manager, thinking John Day, and he was talking about the 3D-printed houses, and there was a tour, which I didn't go on, but obviously, he's a a well-spoken go-getter in the big picture. And that, you know, that's representing, you know, Grant and Harney County in that that eastern Oregon area. So it's just good to hear him speak also.
Oh, and I did find out that there was a company in Prineville that was making pellets out of juniper. And then unfortunately, the man that was running that business had a motorcycle accident. So I haven't found out if the family is still following up on that or not. But you've seen what's happening in Europe, where they're they are really, you know, they're really worried about staying warm this winter.
So who's the District Two Chair now after November?
Kelly.
Okay, he rotated in?
Yep, Kelly rotated in.
Yeah.
So, yes, Kelly will be District Two, so which was good. And, yeah, we had a pretty good turnout for the meeting. It was great. All right, okay, so.
I've just got one more.
Oh, one more.
I just got a whole list of them. Core Three, just an executive council meeting, so the Core Three land that, you know, that we had, you know, offered up there, there was a meeting, kind of a leadership of that group, so a lot of good things happening there. Obviously, a big step forward, you know, it's going to take another year to do the land use associated with it. But one of the items that came up is, you know, doing the 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 lot, the the partitioning of that Core Three land. So we've committed, we wrote a letter saying, you know, 300 acres in this southern area. So there'll be a project, though, it's coming our way, and and let's do it when it's the right thing to do, but that came up. It's like it's, right now, it's still just part of the whole east side of Redmond. It'll be a task for us to just sign on, you know, the fact that somebody's going to spend money to create the parcel for that Core Three project, because it's not parceledized yet, it's not, doesn't have its own title or whatever. Just one of the topics, it'll come our way at some point.
Great. All right.
That's all I got.
Are we good?
I'm good.
Okay, we're good. Okay, we will now adjourn our meeting until Wednesday morning at 9:00 AM. Hope to see you then.